I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular reading Monday, May 5th, 2014, 7:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I would like to add M. township audit position.
And I would like to add N. 2014-2015 fiscal year water rates. Any other additions or deletions?
Yeah, could we add the training for BSNA for tax, everything of the utility billing on that under O?
Okay, BSNA training?
BSNA, yes.
Another one, was their building department issued to it needed to be added for training? Or is it?
No, it's our county.
Okay, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions? Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchie. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Public comment? Any public comment at this time? Public comment? No? Okay. All right. All right. Go ahead, sir. Yes, please. Teach your name and address for record.
John Kiran, 50 on 50, can I only go? Actually, part of my comment was addressed earlier with the clerk in regards to getting email for the water report because I don't need paper, I'm electronic. And also, too, we had just started talking about possibly, if you guys could look into it, I like to pay my bills online. You're the last thing I have to write a check for, so if you guys could look into that, I'd appreciate it. See if you can get that going or whatever.
And I'm going to address those because we have answers to most of it. The water service billing system may already have that option in it because if the payroll does and I send out payroll stubs via...
Right. I get that. So I'd just like to get that email, too, you know, save some money.
And being that it's all BSNA, it may already have that option in it, it's just something that we have to set up so we can look into that. As for the credit card billings, you know, paid by credit card or paid by debit card or any of that, we've looked into it and we thought we had a solution for it. And then the state of Michigan once again put a halt on it saying that it was going to be, we couldn't. Or we could, but we would have to eat the excess charges on it.
You mean like the credit card charge?
Yes. We couldn't charge back the person and because we can't...
That's strange because, you know, the Secretary of State does that.
I know. But every time we get a quote on it, something new comes out that it's, you know, that it's against the law. So we can look into it again. There's been a couple of different things, you know, come up. But right after we get a bunch of quotes on it, again, something came from the MTA saying this is what, you know, the state is looking at, and so we put a hold on it.
What about like electronic fund transfer where I could set it up through my bank? Or I could go online to a website since I know that, I don't know if that company, High Tech, is still whatever, they can set it up so that all I have to do is log into the website and I can say, pay my water bill from this account. Done.
But look into it.
Yeah, usually there's not a charge and it's done like that.
Okay. I will look into it again and I'll actually have Steve look into the legalities again.
That'd be cool because, you know, like I said, I just want to save some money, you know, letters and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, we actually had it all set up about, how many years ago, four. And we were all set to put it into motion and something else came down from the state and it was like, okay.
That's cool. If you could look into it, that'd be great. Captain, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Other public comment? Pro of minutes, 4/7, 4/9, and 4/16, 2014. Questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed for 4/7, 4/9, and 4/16, 2014.
Support. Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Sheriff's report. I did speak with Sheriff Wickersham there. Just hired a part-time guy there, getting another full-time guy back in to get the reports going for us again. So he's definitely on it, looking into it and apologize that we didn't have one here tonight, but he's going to start the process up hopefully for next month, we'll have that available. Fire Department report.
Received and filed, please.
Thank you, sir. EMS report.
Received and filed.
Thank you, sir. DPW report.
Received and filed, please.
Thank you. Co-enforcement report.
I've received the Liquor Control Commission reports. So they can be received and filed.
Thank you. Surveillance Department report. Any questions? Everybody should have received a report from Tom Montec regarding the re-inventory program. This basically lays out the 20% every five years for re-inspect. Engineers report.
Received and filed, please.
Just for everybody's information, the library will be closed Monday, May 26, 2014, in observance of Memorial Day. They will reopen May 27. During their closure, the outside drop box will be available for patron use. Also, this is already passed Saturday, May 3. Next event, Tuesday, May 13, 6 o'clock, Movies and Munchies. And next one after that is May 14, Library Host Adult Craft Program. Two events for the month. Any other questions? Senior Center report. Just to let the other board members know, we did receive a request today. The exercise program has kind of blown up quite a few people, so they're asking if we clear these chairs, consolidate them, stack them a little bit to give them a little bit more room for exercising. Spoke with Cam today, too. That shouldn't be too much of an issue. The only time left to move it back is for planning and for our regular Board of Trustees meetings, but it's kind of cramped and also, too, the elections stuff is out, but this will help them have a little bit more space.
Would they be willing to, it's only four times a year, cancel the exercise on the day before the election?
It's a possibility. Actually, if one of them affected them today, we would have slid these chairs up. They were fine with it. They have no issues. But if you prefer that, so you can set up some way, shape, or form, you know, there's no harm in asking them.
Just something to look into.
All right. Yeah, if you bring it, send me that email over, I'll bring it to their attention and we can get an answer for you on that. Supervisor report. I'd like to schedule two budget workshops so we can finalize the budget this month. I don't know what everybody's schedule looks like. Jeanette, I believe you were saying Wednesdays typically preferably? So preferably 7/14, 21st. And Trustee Churchie, what's the earliest you could start, probably?
This Wednesday is time open, so actually the 14th and the 21st, yeah.
But this Wednesday, the 7th, you're open earlier?
This Wednesday.
Okay, 7th one, good for everybody?
What time are we talking, say?
How about at 4 o'clock? We have a 2:30 meeting with Steve Joppik here.
I was going to say, I thought we had something.
Do a 4 o'clock.
I'm good with it as long as we're out of here by 6, only because I signed up to get blood.
That's fine. Anybody have a problem with that? So on the 7th, 4 to 6? 20. How about we'll wait two weeks to gather any other information and do the 21st. Does that sound good, everybody starting at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, and in the meantime, if my schedule changes, I can...
That sounds great. We'll book at 10, only 6 to 8 on the 21st for the second meeting. Make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchie. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Orders and bills?
In the mail on Saturday before I started this was the Waste Management billing and one for Executive Coffee, so those two are added. There was also a reduction in the Voice newspaper by $173, so I took that off. So the new balance is $258,325.51.
One more time, please. Make a motion to approve the orders and bills in the amount of $258,325.51.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchie. Other questions? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Cotton, Knocker?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees' report. Trustee Churchie, please.
Yeah, a few things. At the planning commission level, we didn't have any business, knew we're old, but we started working on four different ordinances. We reviewed them and brought our questions about, and then Dave will work with us next week, next month on it. The second thing I have is we may be busy at times in the township, but we still are rural, and that goes by saying I have an American bald eagle visited me twice this week, so we're still, it's an honor to me, you know, so. Serious matter, what a question, and we should look into. If someone asked me if I knew that the compost group, Unidig, was dumping at 28 Greshit, I said I'm not aware of it, so I don't know. If you've heard, if anybody's heard, if they can let me know, or, and if it is being done, is that allowed? So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd? Nothing at this time. Thank you, sir. Course report.
We are having an election tomorrow. It's the New Haven recall election that are under the new state recall guidelines, so it's a little bit different. So we'll see how that goes tomorrow. We had a small glitch in the state-run computer that is, that we do the elections with. Microsoft did an update and it blew out all the printing capabilities. So they finally came out and fixed it on Friday. We could process ballots, no problem. It was still doing everything, it just would not print. And so that has now been fixed and we're ready to go tomorrow. That's all.
Received and filed, I'll report.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. No unfinished business at this time, new business.
Now, I'll start. Now, as most of you know, we've gone through the process with the lawyer, the planner, and now the engineer, and I have to say this was definitely, is definitely my far the toughest. In my book, I've been struggling between two of them, and I'm still at this point, still, they're just neck and neck. I don't know if anybody's got any thoughts or, you know, anything, but, you know, the two that I'm looking at is Huron Consultants, which is the ones that we have right now. There's a lot to be said for the experience that's there, because they've got a lot of years, sometimes they've got a lot of years with us, Huron, Bellos for quite a while. You know, and again, there's a lot to be said for that, but at the same time, you've got to realize when they came here, they had no experience with the townships, they have them either both ways. But I've been very happy with them. I have dealt with a lot of issues with them. And the other one that I was concerned was Anderson, X-10, X-9, and Westrick. And I'm, you know, and like I say, just neck and neck, whatever anybody else had thoughts that they have.
I'm along the same lines as you, Chris. I was impressed with different aspects of all four firms. You know, each one brought up different points that, oh, well, that sounds really good, we could work with that, or we could work with that, work with that. Huron, yes, we've been with them and, yeah, there is an experience and the relationship there. But I want to be sure that the best service is still given if we do go with Huron, and especially if Dave Potter is able to join with that group. I think he adds a lot of experience there. I've always been impressed with Anderson and Westrick. I've worked with them through other projects and different townships, so, kind of like Chris, it's like up in the air, so I think it's up to the three of you to steer us which way you want to go.
Any other comments?
Well, I was, I'm like you, Karen, I was impressed with different aspects of each I two, or I three, I should say, was neck and neck on the two companies, same two. So we all seem to be good on the edge. I still have reservations, and these are my reservations, the last time we went through this for AEW, because they do so much work with the county and you can't serve two bosses. So always been happy with Sermet's work and Dave Potter. We know he can, he can talk like no other person. He puts things into perspective. He can talk in layman's terms, so you know what he's saying, and you're not shaking your head and going, I don't understand that. So I'm leaning towards Huron.
Well, like everyone else has said, Huron's been good to us the years that we've had them. Dave Potter would only be an added asset to us, I believe. I know there were some that were wondering how that was going to work, but I think we've all covered that and been satisfied with the answers. And I, too, this is one of the toughest things I've had to do, to make this decision, but I'm leaning towards Huron right now, and as long as we can do a, can we do a yearly? And if either side has a problem with us or Huron has a problem with anything, can we get out of that within a specific amount of time, or are we tied into a long period of time?
If I may, Mr. Supervisor, jump in with that question. Well, as the Board knows, I haven't been part of reviewing all of the RFPs and the details pertaining to them, but I assume that with each RFP or proposal that was submitted, there was a duration made part of that. Ultimately, it comes down to the Board's discretion. If the bidder that you're directing that at chooses to address that issue, if you, if it is different than what they've proposed in their materials, any bidders that are here this evening could potentially address that if the Board wanted them to. The difficulty is if you approve a motion and you don't know whether that will work with the bidder, any of the bidders, given, they would each need an opportunity at the meeting to answer it. If you posed it to them, you could proceed without it and leave it up to them to accept or reject it, but it might be prudent to know ahead of time before making any motion like that. Unless, of course, it is written as an alternative in the materials that have been supplied, then you're just choosing one of the alternatives. In either case, ultimately, it will want to be a very clear part of the motion, how that'll work and whether there needs to be maybe a contract setting up how that would get renewed. For example, is it an automatic renewal unless there's a period of notice that is sent by the Board ahead of time? Or does it need to come back to the Board after a year to get renewed? Those are two different ways of going about it. So those are the issues that I see from a legal side with considering something other than what might be in the bid proposals.
I believe right now, is it automatic? I mean, they don't come before us every year or three years that I've ever seen. I think it's always been just an automatic renewal.
Fire somewhere, yes. And terminable at will, I believe, too, with written notes.
If I may, Mr. Supervisor, I'm not aware of a formal contract setting it up which would make it at will, which would be just as it occurred here, at any time that the Board chooses that it wants to consider putting it out to bid again. It can. Again, if there's contracts as part of this, then it would be a different scenario, and I can take a look at that while you're continuing your deliberation of the materials that are being passed over.
It seems to me that the previous, it had 30-day clause in it.
That's what I thought I saw somewhere. Yeah, we're very fortunate to get four very qualified firms to interview. Appreciate everybody interviewing with us. I look at who our engineer works with very closely. I ask some of our department heads. I got positive feedback regarding Huron. It's hard to change just for change, when, especially when we've had good dealings and good working relations. Not saying the other gentleman couldn't provide that to us, because I'm very confident they could, but I would also have the same type of reward. Basically, if you did good, you'd stay on with us if you made us happy. I see nothing that has been negative with Huron or in dealing with Dave Potter, easy either. Matter of fact, we've had very positive responses in dealing with matters. So I would, I wouldn't change for the sake of changing. I feel very comfortable with Sermet interviewing our department heads. I got positive feedback also. And I think the number one is the DPW, who works with them mostly on a daily basis.
Yeah, the three of you work the closest with, with Sermet here, you know, and Huron and stuff, so that's why I'm kind of like taking your feedback and also the department heads. But I'd also like it to be stipulated, and it has gotten better and things going, that the engineer is just for engineer work. Not checking the roads for, you know, the gravel and what needs, you know, things, little things like that. We have to just squeeze the pocketbook a little more, so anything, and also, Sermet, he's trying, so that's the biggest thing. We're all trying to squeeze the pocketbook and that.
And I understand that. One of the things, though, the road issues, though, is clarified, though. He was the only one that caught that they had us down for improper mileage. He did catch that we were being charged the wrong way and computed our mileage and we re-verified.
I'm just referring to, there's no reason for him to drive up and down the road.
Right, I understand.
You know, it's like the fire department, the EMS, those are the people, the DPW, you know, something like that is a similar.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
I agree.
Okay.
I think you're looking back at me. Kind of thick materials here and whatnot, and from what I looked at, I tried to pinpoint sections where some sort of period or duration might be listed, and I did not see anything. And to me, that would indicate that the duration of the contract award in terms would be up to the Board, so if the Board wanted it to be, you know, up to a yearly review or 30 days notice, terminable at will, as far as I can see in these materials, I didn't see anything that would contradict that. And again, if that's mistaken, you can invite the bidders just to address that issue alone if the Board would like.
So would that be something that we would just add into the contract when it's signed? We don't have to work that into the motion right now? That would just be part of the contract?
I think it would be a good idea to make it clear in the motion that that's the intent of the Board. That way, if there are any issues, it can come back to the Board for further consideration.
And what would you call it, a 30-day pause?
So with that said, would we have to do a one-year, two-year, three-year?
No, with that, you would not. You would be able to terminate it with 30 days notice at any time.
In our discretion.
That's correct. So the contract would continue for so long as the Board desired to have it, and your only obligation is to give a 30-day termination notice.
Basically what we have right now. If they don't make us happy, we give them notice that we're terminating and put it out for bid, in a nutshell.
That is correct.
I make a motion...
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Huron utilizing for true engineering services only and stipulating that there is a 30-day notice of termination as an at-will professional.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Wohlkauf, please.
Turchi?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes. I want to thank you gentlemen, I really do appreciate it. I mean, you're impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Employee healthcare coverage. We have Mr. Saft and Mr. Mueller here this evening. Thank you gentlemen for coming. Appreciate it. This is Michael's father, too, who was at the meeting the other day. Senior Mueller.
Well, here's my, my question on all of this. And being that we already have two workshops set up, I would like to have a sit-down part of the workshop again with Mr. Mueller to go over this. Because, you know, we can read this, but just like the other day, we still had questions. And I only want to do this once. So I don't want to have to, and I want to know exactly what we're looking at.
Is there anything tonight, by, you gentlemen made a trip out here that would help? Do you also prepare for that?
No, not really, just explaining what each of these are. And I guess Chris talked to...
Junior.
Junior. And, you know, Chris came away with a bunch of stuff. And I want to hear that firsthand in a workshop setting that we all can ask questions and, you know, go forward that way. And then Chris also had another idea that I think would be worthwhile to look into as a Board, but it needs to be hashed out in a workshop, so.
I'm pretty confident that we can find something out of the ones that we were sent. I don't think we need to dig any farther as far as trying to find something additional. I think from the ones that you sent us, I think we're going to be able to work with that.
Sure, could you come up to the question?
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you very much. You know, you guys are in a unique situation where you're located, you're in a unique situation amongst, you know, with us looking at the different insurance companies that are out there. We also have to look at the different networks because there's provider discounts and provider networks that are out there. And we can bring you the best program in town, but if no doctors participate in those programs, no, none of the employees are going to be very happy because they're going to be paying out of network costs. And so while you're looking at these things, we have to make sure that the doctors participate in those networks. That's a major, major caveat to this entire program that you have here. And of the three programs, I assume that my son had explained to you, you have an HRA, an HSA, a PPO program. You know, those different, the money comes out in different ways. And I think that's, that's the biggest concern is right now is that are there deductibles of $2,000, $1,500? Or do you have a doctor's office visit copay of $40, $20, $30, things of that nature? We can manipulate those numbers to what's affordable to you guys. You know, it comes up a lot slower with the Community Blue or Simply Blue program, with the PPO program, than it does with an HRA or a high deductible health program. And I can answer any questions you have. You guys have our number, either Michael, myself, or Chuck Baker. There's, anybody in the office can answer any of these questions that you have. At any point in time for anybody.
Well, we sure do appreciate it. I know, myself, speaking for myself, I do, and I think the Board does. And Mr. Saft, too, Steve Saft, Jr., the help we got. Because we went through many different avenues, just so the audience knows, exhaustively trying to find every plan out there and even going down to a government workshop through the MISD, finding out, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeanette, 66 plans or something of that nature. We made sure we got every plan available, or 66. So not only did we do summary page, but we copied the entirety of the plan. We spent hours down there making sure. We've got different answers from everybody. Steve Saft and Mr. Mueller's son were the first people we got straight answers from, in my opinion, after dealing with all this. Most of the people have no clue on what this is about since the change has taken effect. And I'm sure you've got a lot of people that tell you that, that other companies that they dealt with. We were told so many different things. This is the first time we've gotten solid information is from these gentlemen here. So we've really exhausted the process, just so everybody's aware.
And another thing that came out of all of those workshop meetings, we have a deadline we put on ourselves of July 1st because that's the new fiscal year. So that would be a good time to get it rolling. And so that's why if we're going to have, and I'd like to add it, I guess, to the meeting.
Excuse me, by law, healthcare reform, you have to give the employee 60 days' notice before changing any health insurance programs. You must give them 60 days' notice. Okay? So either if we make the change effective 7/1 or we make a decision by, you know, June 1st, we have got to give those employees 60 days' notice that their health insurance will be changing. And you can change with any health insurance carrier anytime during the year. It's not an issue. You have one change per year, even with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
Would we be able to add this, maybe at 4:00 on the 21st? Or at 5:00 on the 21st? We already have a workshop meeting at that.
I have no problem with that, but it's, we'd have to check. Who would you like there?
The Board.
Just the Board alone? Okay. I don't have a problem adding it.
Karen, do you?
We need to make sure they're there.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I won't, I won't know until Donna's available.
But we could tend to look, set it up for that.
We will make ourselves available. You, you guys, find the time that you'd like to meet, we will make ourselves available.
Okay, so 5:21 and 4:00.
That'd be fine.
4:00?
21, May 21st.
Yeah.
Sounds like the time. Right, about 5:21.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, May 21st.
Yeah, see, I may not be.
Want to do 5:00? Because I think we could do it an hour.
I think probably an hour's enough for their part anyways.
5:00 then?
If I have a full schedule that day, I work till 5:00 and that's a for Huron.
The only one thing I do request is my mother's birthday on May 21st. That's a big issue.
No, what about this, what about the other one, meeting the 7th? I don't want...
Well, we're not actually looking for more information. It's just to go over what we already have. Or you guys already have a meeting at the 7th before.
Yeah.
Or 12th at 4:00 or something.
Yeah, we, then we have another Wednesday available, too, on the 14th. If that works for everybody, not fine with that.
It's fine with me.
I don't want to see you miss your mother's birthday.
I don't want to miss any. It'll take me a while to get out of the doghouse.
That's right.
The 14th at 5:00?
I work till 5:00.
14th at 6:00? Because we have nothing else that night?
Okay. Unless, like I say, I hear my schedule has changed or something, but sometimes it doesn't change so that day, so.
Sorry to make a run, but I really appreciate it.
Not a problem. If Jeanette just sends us an email telling us where and when to be, we will be there. Okay?
One question I did have is, we talked about, Michael's going to check into if, even though it's a group, can the individuals pick different plans?
Not with the amount of people that you have currently on the plan. If you have 15 or more individuals currently enrolled in the plan, then we can put multiple plans in there. But because I believe there's between seven and nine in the program, you cannot pick multiple plans.
Well, he talked about Lloyd with everybody having an individual plan.
Well, I mean, you can do that. You'd have to set up a defined contribution plan at that point in time. And that's a whole different animal. We have to set up a flexible benefit defined contribution plan. You'd have to come up with a dollar amount. And at that dollar amount, we would come out here individually and, and just to be blunt, we'd sell everybody an individual healthcare program at that point in time that meets their needs. But you'd have to go up with a dollar amount that you would be giving to that employee.
And actually, when I talked to Mike on Friday, I think it was Friday, he said that he did run numbers and it was actually more expensive.
It's going to, it's going to be more expensive because it's an individual program and the people that, you're going to have adverse selections. So the people that need the insurance are going to get the lowest deductible plan. And the people that don't, you know, that don't need it are going to take the higher deductible plans, number one. Number two, they're individual policies. We would love to sell you nothing more than individual policies. We make double the amount of money, but it's not the right way for you to go. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks again, Steve.
So with that, I would like to make a motion that we table the employee healthcare coverage discussion until the 14th at 6:00.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed, motion passes. Healthcare coverage authorization, once again.
And this has to do with, on our special meeting of the 16th, there was a motion made, motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher, to authorize the supervisor's office to contract with Michael Mueller of TMR and Associates to bring the current Blue Cross and Blue Shield policy into compliance. All ayes, the motion carried. And I just want that right into the record so that it doesn't become a needle in a haystack.
Right, you can find it. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Fire Department computer purchase authorization. Chief?
No. That's me again. At the later meeting at the Policy Manual Discussion Workshop, a motion was made by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd, to authorize Clerk Keith to purchase two computers with Windows 7 for the fire department at a cost quoted by High Tech Systems Services. This was in response to the discussion we were having on things that came up mid-month. Oh, you're happy about a new computer. Things that come up mid-month that, you know, are an emergency situation.
Okay, thank you. 2014 lawn fertilization.
Sir? Boys, it's nice to see green out there instead of white. What a change. With that being said, it looks like spring is trying to be here. Everything's starting to grow pretty quickly. With that being said, it's that time of year again to start thinking about fertilizing the grounds. I did make contact with True Green, which is the company that we use the last three years. They did send me updated proposals for properties. They did hold the prices again this year. They've done a superb job for us over the years. The invoice, I'm sorry, the quotes covered two applications, a spring and a fall. But let me tell you, they do come out multiple times in between to do what they call maintenance, touch-ups. Especially weed control, if you will.
They've done a great job, but they were the chief.
They really have, yes. They've always, they've always treated us very good. I recommend sticking with them. And at this time, I would ask for approval to authorize them for this coming season.
Any questions?
Cam, this is for all the locations here? Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2?
Correct.
I was just going to say, since we didn't go out for bids on it, do we have to make the motion to basically continue their service type thing or extend their contract another year?
I think it's just for a service, so I can turn the topic. Can we just authorize this one?
Well, if, if this would fall under the township's bid policy, what I'd suggest you do is that to the extent, have your motion indicate to the extent that the bid policy may apply, that it be waived in consideration for the continuation of the contract as it exists, since there's no increase. So in other words, you're not seeing an increase here. So there would be little reason to go out for a bid because this price succeeded in a prior bid. I don't know how the bid policy applies to that, but just to make sure that when you go back and look at this and if there's any concerns about it, that that be recognized. And perhaps my stating it into the record is sufficient. Thank you. Yes.
As stated by Attorney Japik in reference to the bidding policy, I would authorize that we hire True Green at a cost of $2,510 for the fertilization of the three areas of the township. Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion?
The $2,510 is for both, that's not each time?
No, that'd be for the territory.
All those in favor? Aye. Closed, motion passes. DPW grounds maintenance position rehire. Sir?
Last year, we hired a gentleman, Patrick Germaine, to help us out with the seasonal position. Patrick did a great job working along with Wes. Them two, especially mid-season, really started picking up a stride and working really well together. As the season winded down, talking with Patrick, asked him if he'd be interested in coming back again this year. He said he would be as long as he was available. I did contact Patrick last week and he is available and is interested in returning this year. And at this time, I would recommend that we rehire Patrick for this year's seasonal position. Since he's already familiar not only with all of our grounds, but our equipment and our procedures here. Same rate of pay, same everything.
And I believe that was $9 per.
Correct.
I make a motion that we rehire Patrick Germaine, or I should say, bring him back from layoff as a seasonal DPW employee at $9 per hour.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? The only, the only comment I have to make is that if next year with Patrick, if he comes again, being that it's an employee that we don't have to retrain or things of that nature, we might want with an increase for him due to the fact that we're not having to go through all the process overall. Again, he's worked great with Wes and Cam and really impressed with all three of them, so the job they got done. So I'd like to pass it on to him that hopefully the Board will reconsider that next time around. All those in favor? Aye. Closed, motion carries.
Who's supportive of that?
Chris.
I do. 2014 dust control program. Deputy Supervisor?
Good evening. I confirmed the mileage, the miles for gravel, and that is correct as on the form. At the same rate as last year. Nothing's changed, keeping it the same. The county still is...
Two applications and last year, we funded two applications ourselves.
Correct.
For a total of four applications. We have planned it by year weather-related. I think we need to keep an eye out, you know, based on weather conditions. If it's wet at the latter part of the year, that we can cancel one of the applications if need be. The problem we have, once again, is for anybody who knows, is, and I know we have an old county guy who uses salt brine, it's what we can afford. The other applications are quite costly, a lot more money. They're very effective, but we're dealing with a limited budget. And that's why we go the route with the salt brine and all the other communities do too, pretty much that we're aware of. We tried contracting through the, through the county to keep our money. money locally. Unfortunately, they have subcontracted through the other contractor at times, and I believe that school will be handling it. Patricia Eisenhardt?
It doesn't say.
Just so everybody knows, that's what took place the last time we did that contract through the county. So we try as much as we can, and I think that was the board's intention, to keep the money here and have the guys that maintain our roads apply it, because I think they have the most intimate knowledge of our, of our gravel roads. So that being said, this is one of the things we can do four times a year, to keep the dust down as much as possible.
Right. And like last year, they increased the amount of brine per mile that's going into the ground.
The application amount.
Right.
Well, we know we have to do something, and unfortunately, the brine isn't, isn't the best, isn't the most desirable, but I make a motion that we approve four applications staggered out in the season, depending on the weather, at a cost of forty, well, twenty thousand eight hundred and eight for the two applications that the township paid for, pays for, and two applications paid for by the county.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? We can, we can call them and tell them around about the dates.
I was just gonna ask that. Usually, you decide on when, like the first two is, is stated there, one in May and one in mid-June. When do you want the next one? Mid-July or end of July?
Yeah.
End of August?
You know, once again, weather-related and, and there's different circumstances that play a lot. Like the last time, we had detours that in some areas made the dust unbearable for people based on the volume of traffic. So there are some variables we have to take into effect, but we're definitely gonna want one in August. I think everybody will agree to that, that we're definitely gonna need one there. And then, I would say the other one, it would be like a on-call type situation based on the weather.
They're gonna need to have it narrowed down a little bit.
Right, well, pick a date, you know.
So end of June, or I'm sorry, mid-June is, is the one they're doing last. So then the?
Mid, I would say mid-August unless, well, mid-September for right now.
That late?
You know, how else do you want to space it out?
Should be good because that'll be after good old days and all the traffic.
You agree with that?
So August and then after good old days.
And you know, we'll check with them if we have to have a change as needed. I think we can check with them on that, but we'll, we'll give that as time of dates for right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, do you think that July will be a problem, Chief, or?
No, I think that'll be good.
And like I said, if we see an issue that's arise, we'll ask our emergency crews too to kind of keep an eye on it. Let us know if we have a problem and we have to change something, we'll try to accommodate that change. So.
I'm gonna amend the motion to add the two applications, one in August and one in September.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Township vehicle auto wash prepaid car request. This request, I know, came in from Shannon Murray, and if you have any other information regarding it?
I tried to write everything in my notes.
I know one of the problems he stated was he was going through the other car wash. I don't wanna mention any names, but it was taking multiple times to try and clean.
They don't use enough water in the rinse, so the car would come out and still had soap on it, so he would have to go through a second time. I verified he was still only using the one car wash ticket though, so it wasn't costing more, it was just costing him more time. That's why he'd like to give this other one a chance and...
Was the other one less expensive too? But it was just a little farther out.
It depends where he's at in the township.
Yeah, at six, oh, yeah.
To where it is. If he'd used the township hall here and it's two miles longer, but...
I was disappointed in the wash a couple times too, where it didn't quite?
Yeah.
Well, I've, I've used both before, and John's is by far, you know, what that he's recommending is by far better.
That's his recommendation.
The only question that I have, on Tuesdays, they have a two dollar off. If we have the prepaid and we use that, does that still give us the two dollars off?
Yes.
That's all the better.
And that was the other thing too. If you look at the savings on the prepaid, there's substantial savings for the larger gift card purchase. And I'd highly recommend that. I mean, that's all.
The fleet card and the other card really wouldn't work for us. That's why they wanted to go with the gift card. You can put whatever amount. And you get either the fifteen, twenty, or the twenty-five percent discount.
Do we leave a card in the vehicle?
Um, I would recommend leaving it in the building department.
Okay. Well, that's my question, because we have two vehicles.
Right, and it's like whoever, right.
Either that or buy two gift cards, you know, either way.
I would leave it under control of Shannon Comer.
Yeah, I would too. If you bought two, two cards, you're not gonna go with the most expensive one and spend all that money and get the twenty-five percent off. You're gonna want two smaller amount cards, and then you're only gonna get like a fifteen percent off. One card, you can get it if you wanted to go out that high, the twenty-five percent discount, and both vehicles can be used.
Yeah, and depending on the purchase, you could handle the twenty-five percent savings, which is considerable.
Yeah, if you just wanted to start with a smaller amount and do the fifteen percent discount and just see how it works.
Just to give an example, a four hundred dollar card value is a twenty-five percent discount. For a cost of three hundred bucks, you get eighty washes.
That's gonna last a long time.
That's, that's a lot of savings, twenty-five percent.
The only thing you have to worry about is, and not that I think John's is gonna go out of business, but if John went out of business, you know, I mean, he's been there, that, that business has been there a while.
And I think how often they wash, but eighty is a lot. The eighty washes is a lot.
But if you think two cars, you know, the fifty washes during the summer, you could technically maybe wash the vehicles twice a week. I could see going the two hundred and fifty dollar card value for fifty washes and that for, you know, both vehicles using that.
Yeah, it's twenty-five washes each vehicle.
Right. And that's, you know, twenty-five, you could actually, in the summer, we could do that, you know, in the summer. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of a two hundred and fifty dollar card, prepaid card at John's Auto Wash for a cost of two hundred dollars. And it's to be utilized by both of the township vehicles.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Township building window cleaning request.
Okay. This room, the windows on the inside are extremely in need of cleaning. That's what started me on this. I called our company that does our cleaning, and she decided to be wonderful and gave us the same price she was using in two thousand ten to clean our windows. If you do the inside and outside of all the perimeter of the building, lower level, anything you can reach from standing on the ground, it's five hundred and fifty-one dollars. She said if you just wanna do the inside and not the outside, just cut that in half and it'll be two seventy.
Two sixty-five.
Sixty-five, thank you. But this time of the year, inside and outside really does need it.
Is that the last time that was done? It was in two thousand ten?
Um, I believe the DPW did some of the inside windows, but I think it was, I'm not sure exactly what they did. I don't know, they, they don't do the inside. Thank you.
The windows have been washed since then by the DPW. It's just like, nobody thinks we haven't washed the windows since two thousand ten.
That's where the bid was, so I just assumed.
And I didn't realize the windows next to our office doors is a separate price, that those don't get done on a weekly or monthly basis, but that's on the sheet too. And I was looking at some of those and they really need to be done too, but that's up to you.
Do we need to get bid on something like this? Because I know we used to, there was a firefighter before that did window washing, and I don't know if he still does that.
Yeah, but according to our policy manual, you can't work for the township, do a job like that for the township. It's in our policy manual, unless you've changed your policy.
No, we're working on changing. Yeah, we're working on changing that.
He owns, he still owns his own window cleaning company, but currently, policy states that he can't bid on jobs from the township. Otherwise, that would be a no-brainer.
Yeah, because I've seen his work. I know he does good work, and I'm sure he'd be reasonable, so.
How close are we on the policy manual?
Oh, we're, yeah, we're very close. But even in the policy manual that we're talking about, there, we can, we have references in there to state laws which do address existing employees entering into a contract with the township. I covered that a little bit when we talked about it. You have to go through a series of disclosures at a public meeting and written disclosures and so forth. So while the new policy would potentially allow it, you'd have to go through those procedures before you could award a bid for that. As far as putting this out to bid, always in the discretion of the board, but here again, we have a situation where presumably, I don't know, in this case, with True Green, we knew that it was bid out last year, and that bidder came in first and kept its prices the same. Here, we have a twenty-ten. To maintain consistency with that thought, that would come into play as well, assuming it was bid out back in two thousand ten.
I did get other quotes last time.
So.
I asked for Helen.
Yeah, our existing cleaning company too.
Yeah, I just brought it up because I know.
I agree, I know, I agree.
It's down to those two, the windows and commercial.
And here's another, he has the equipment to do the high-up ones?
Yes.
Which we're not getting with us.
Yes, correct.
Not per se going on, well, getting three quotes, getting three quotes of actual window washers that have the equipment to do.
Can I make a suggestion?
Hmm?
I'd like to see a quote on every window in the whole place done. We have them done. They're all done at one time. We know when they've all been done, every single window.
No, that's what I'm saying. Everything, even the high-up ones, because, you know, Ian's company doesn't have the equipment to do that.
Right.
So that's my thought.
And if you have Ian's company do it, and then you hire somebody to do the upper ones, it's gonna smear the bottom one, so it's like.
Right. So we could go with three quotes as opposed to?
Yep.
A bidding process of some sort, just?
That's, that is a bidding process, yes.
You have anything like the big bidding order?
You could certainly do a simple quote getting process for this. It's not a complicated manner. So.
Do we need a motion to that?
You can make a motion and then we could have put it out for bid.
Sure.
I make a motion that we have the supervisor's office get three quotes from professional one window companies with the expertise and equipment to wash every window in the building, inside and out.
Would you, is that a quote from firefighter accounts? With disclosure?
Well, that was if we picked that person, we'd have to do the disclosure. If we picked somebody else, we wouldn't have to.
Right, but I'm saying, would you like to see a quote from him? That's what I'm getting at?
Oh, I'd like to see his quote, yeah.
Okay.
Captain, I'm calling.
I'm not even sure which firefighter it is, so.
Dean.
Dean Collins.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Township floor mat purchase.
Karen, do you want this one or do you want me?
Well, you can start now.
Um, the year that we moved in here, we purchased two one-hundred percent recycled material floor mats. They were for the stairwell, one at the top and one at the bottom. Then we've noticed that we needed one at the front entrance, the main entrance, so we took one from the stairwell and brought it over here. It is not going the correct way. It's going across the doors instead of longways, and we wanted to try to save some money and purchase other mats that we have and not have this monthly fee anymore. The recycled mats are wonderful because you could just hold them up, hose them down, and then lay them back out in there nice and clean. These mats that we have look as brand-new as they did the day we got them. They're a little bit more expensive, but they're well worth it, especially since we have a LEED certified building.
What's your recommendation regarding the existing contract and purchase of new mats? And I have, I don't know, Karen, if you, is there a way out of that contract?
I did speak with a gentleman that apparently three months ago, Nancy, who was the former gal in the other building, was bringing these in. Three months ago, this gentleman started. As we're looking at the contract, there is a contract that was signed in February of eleven, and it's for sixty months. I question the fact that since we've been in here, May of two thousand and eight, I think they've been charging us for a scraper mat, which is one that's outside, catches the dust or the snow, ice, all that stuff. I don't think we've had it, as Jeanette said, I don't think we've had it since we've been here. None of us caught it that, I mean, when they come in, you've signed for it, and some of the people aren't here any longer that was doing this. And so I talked to the gentleman today and said, what can they do for us? We can get out of the contract. It would cost us right now for a buy of six hundred and eighty-four dollars, because we have twenty-two months yet. I said, what about the fact that we've been being charged ever since we've been here? Shame on us that we didn't see it, but also, they don't know that they're only carrying two in and we're being charged for three. He said he would give us credit for the three months that he's been here, but he can't, until he talks to a supervisor, say whether we can get credit, any credit for the back. He's coming by tomorrow because he's sure we got that scraper mat here, and he wants to check out the mat, the mats that we have. And, but ironically enough, the second phone call that I got today, he said he had talked to one of his bosses and told him to already take this fee off, so I don't quite understand why he would be taking the one off if he thinks that it's here.
There was also an escalation of service charge too.
Service charge. We should have been notified each anniversary date. They can charge you up to five percent. And we were never notified.
Attorney Jopik, without notification, could that create, could that terminate the contract and a change?
I'm not sure of the question.
They changed our service fee without disclosure. Could that, could that change the terms of the contract?
It started out at ten dollars and seventy-nine cents back in two thousand and eleven. The latest bill that we have from them, we're getting charged seventeen sixty-nine for a service charge. He claims that we should have been notified each anniversary date that they could charge us up to five percent more for that service charge. We were never notified about that.
Well, considering what's at risk here, I think I'd like to take a closer look at that issue before jumping to any conclusions. Also, I have some concerns whether, from the sounds of what's been described here this evening, whether or not they may not have been violating the contract earlier, and whether or not that could give cause to the township to terminate the contract earlier. early without damages.
Does it get reinforced?
Perhaps. So that may open up some level of discussion at least, in terms of whether the township is able to get out of this contract early, and if not that, some discussion with the current vendor on what it might involve getting out of the contract, because it sounds like there are some issues there. I also am interested in making sure that when the 60 months comes up, assuming the township sticks with the contract, that a reading of this contract tells me that the township's required to give advance notice if it's not going to renew, otherwise it renews automatically for another five years that you're bound by the contract. So you want to be very careful about that, and perhaps the earlier that notice is provided, the better. And then it's open, they could bid again after that. But there may be some sort of notice we want to give them now if we are going to, for some reason, we have to maintain the contract. So I think this is worth, bottom line, looking into a little bit further from the legal and practical standpoint.
Well, here's my question on that, though. For $684, we can be done with it. What are we going to spend on legal fees to find out that we still have to pay the $684? Are we better off just paying the $684 and being done with it? I know that's not really a question.
That's a challenge.
Right, that's what I'm saying, then we're done.
Let me put it.
Or we can spend a whole bunch of legal fee money to find out we still have to pay the $684.
You would, you would not. I can't see that this would take me any more than an hour, which as you, as you know, is a lot less than $684.
Well, that's my question.
In the neighborhood of $130.
Well, and I'm thinking.
I just don't want to do a good money after bad.
I'm thinking if he comes tomorrow and checks it out, because when I, when he gave me this $600, I said, wow. I said, there's, and the fact that you have been charging us all this time for six years, and no one picked up on this, I said, you won't work with us on this at all, one way or the other? And he said, well, I need to talk to my supervisor, and I'll come tomorrow and check it out. I can't believe that that scraper rug is not there. So they may be willing to work with us, I don't know. I don't know.
On that agreement, number five, Stephen, you need to read number five, especially the last two sentences of number five. I think that's our way out. When we first had the contract before this one, it was quarterly, they would change the mats in the other building. When we moved here, because we had less traffic in the building, for some reason, we went to month-to-month, and I think it's, that's where the change is.
Well, what that, if I may, Mr. Supervisor.
Sure.
Well, what that language says is that the company has the right to increase the prices, but in return, the customer has the right to reject the price increase. And if the customer, being the township, rejects the price increase, the company can terminate this agreement. It doesn't allow the township to terminate the agreement, but it would give them the opportunity to terminate it. Implied in that language is that if the township rejects the price increase and the company does not terminate, then the company cannot invoke the price increase. So it's choices to terminate or to continue under the existing price.
But if we were never notified of the increase, how can we reject or accept it?
Again, openness in this contract, and that it would be exactly right by not paying it. I think it's relevant how long that price increase has been in place, and if it's been paid for the township or by the township for a period of time or not.
So in other words, if we've been paying it once we got the increase, we assume, they assume we knew about the increase, because here we are paying it.
That's possibly the response that they would give.
Yeah.
Jody, you still keep the bills? Are the Cintas bills in storage? Can we go back a year, just to see? I mean, I know you can't do it like this week, but.
Yeah, that's the thing. Yeah, no, the, um, yeah, I have that one.
I'm just out of curiosity.
But they may not, they may not need to see the bills.
Right.
We're just going to have Attorney Joppik review this first before we go any further. Does that sound so serious?
Alls that I ask is that you consider the, it'll only cost us $600 to get out. We just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, I always do try to keep that sort of thing in mind, and I absolutely will, I'm happy to keep it very minimal. I don't see having to get very detailed. What I like to do is just take a closer look at the language, give it some thought, and give some advice to the township and how it might want to proceed in dealing with the contractor. I don't necessarily need to get involved with the discussions with the vendor and so on and so forth. I'll just give some advice on how to handle those.
I, what I plan to do, if Karen, if we would ask for termination first, if they disagree with termination of the contract, then we go further, I would, I would advise or suggest to the board. Get a motion, please.
So we're looking to just table this until?
Post comment.
Until Stephen, okay, I make a motion and we table the township floor mat purchase until the lawyers have a chance to look at the contract from Cintas.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting room use request.
McComb County Elections would like to utilize our meeting room on Tuesday, July 29, 2014, for election inspector training. They've used it in the past, we're centrally located for the municipalities to travel to, and the room would be in use most of the day, starting at 9:00 AM and finishing up at 3:30. There's no extra cost involved because we're open during this time period. And the calendar in the break room already shows it's free.
That's a Tuesday, the 29th?
July 29. Correct.
Any problems with that? Anybody?
The only thing that I ask is that we reinforce that they bring their own coffee, cream, stuff like that, so there's no cost to the township. I just don't want them to come in and say, hey, you guys got some coffee?
Is that a motion?
Did you make the motion first or now?
Yeah, I made the motion. I made the motion and approved meeting use room request of McComb County Elections you made in July 29.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. 2012 Michigan Building Code Seminar Request. This request is. Request is by Building Inspector Hymanis. And Jeanette, what, as it stands right now, she wants it open-ended, whether she can attend or not? So approving two?
Well, we already, there's been a confusion over this because apparently Shannon hasn't decided whether she wants to go or not.
I'm, I'm being told she's leading no.
Right.
That she shouldn't go to this, and.
She came to me today and asked me about it. We have already paid her dues, Bob's dues. We've already did a check for Bob to go to this on May 14 or 15. I told her we would discuss it tonight, if she decides, you know, go ahead and leave it on the agenda, and if she decides she's going to go, Jody will be doing a batch of probably electric bills and different things, that we could get the check cut for them within the next week. Leave it, she was ready to say no. I said, do you decide whether you want to go or not? This way we've got her covered if she decides to go. If she doesn't want to go, she doesn't have to.
That's my mind.
Shannon was leaning towards not going because it's more for the inspectors and all the changes in the code book that are coming up, and she's not going to be interpreting these codes. If someone comes in and wants her opinion on the codes, she cannot give it because she's not certified in any way. She has to get Bob. If this was more administrative, then she would go within a heartbeat.
Right, and I think that's the question, if something comes up where there's going to be an administrative part.
Right.
And I guess for some reason he wants the second phone call, so that was one of the reasons. So I guess if they determine that.
Right.
So be it. But I agree with you on that, Karen. Let her be the determining factor, whether it's worth the while, she'll tell us straight up if she needs to go or not.
And I believe there's a phone number that she can call. I suggested calling and see if she can get a little bit more information on the class itself.
It's $100 that we'd already be paying for, well, they use one of our township vehicles, which is already going that way, so just be another person riding along.
Right.
Lunch is already provided within that cost.
Not that it would be a bad thing for her to see what this Symbolia does, but this is more, this is more of a technical. So I agree with what Jeanette's saying.
Absolutely.
So I believe this one, we should just send Bob Hymanis.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, why, why are we going to spend $100 if it's not even something that pertains to her?
So he said, if she determines that there is administrative or something else comes up, if it's open-ended, she can make that determination at that time. If not, she's not going. That's what was told us, and I think that was told to you.
And her dues, I mean, we've paid her dues for her, so she's all set with that, but I didn't, she wanted us to just forget about this tonight, and I said, let's talk about it and decide what the board's pleasure is, if she wants to go, she can go. She doesn't feel she has the need, and I, you know, I don't either. So do we need to make a motion on this, or?
Well, I think we need to make the motion for Bob Hymanis. You know, and Shannon has the opportunity to start going to some of the Symbolia meetings, and then she can get her feet wet and see from there where she can go, where, I really think this one is, is more on the technical side, so. I make a motion that we approve Bob Hymanis to go to the 2012 Michigan Building Code and overview and look into significant changes since 2009.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Audit position.
Previously, we had Katie Sable as the audit person in the township. She had a lot of experience. She won, at one time, long ago, worked for Stuart, Bivane, Whipple. She moved to Fermenton Hills, she got a job in Dearborn, and she vacated the position. We heard John Neap, who is a former audit person, CIO of, from Roosevelt, he was doing, he was doing real good and everything, but he works at a golf course and he just doesn't have time. Katie's interested in it, I'd like to hire Katie back. I verified with John that he was in fact tendering his resignation. Katie now is no longer working in Dearborn, she's a stay-at-home mom.
Same rate of pay as when she left?
Same amount of pay, no benefits. And.
That's your recommendation.
My recommendation is that we hire Katie Sable back.
Thank you.
Will there be any new trainings she'll have to go through?
Pardon me?
Will there be any new trainings she'll have to go through, or should she just kind of pull right in?
No, she'll, she'll jump right into it.
Hasn't changed much since she did her last?
No, but she was, she's only been gone maybe a year and a half.
Yeah. Did you make a motion or any de-motion?
Need a motion, please.
We'll make a motion that we allow the clerk's office to hire Katie Sable as the, what would be your term title?
Audit position?
Just our position?
Audit position.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Water rates, Mr. Safe.
Thank you. Good evening. Just want to say thank you on behalf of my company and my family. Thank you so much. We value your trust and allowing us to stay as your engineer. Thank you again. Just to reiterate, the current contract is exactly the way the Attorney Joppik said it's open, with a 30-day termination clause. So there are no changes over there. Going to the water rates, I believe you received my letter dated April 17th of this year. It's basically taken the proposed DWSD rate and converting it back to line-X rates. And at this iteration, there's approximately 2.8% decrease proposed by DWSD. Cam and I, as part of the contract renewal negotiation, we were able to lower our limits, and that's where the decrease came. All other communities, most of the other communities.
Yeah, I've heard anything about decrease.
We were fortunate to have a little buffer that we negotiated at a lower rate. But at this point, since it's such a minor decrease, we recommend retaining the same rate as last year, which is the $48.30.
On the average, what does that, like, per household come up to? At, at, just on the average?
Times on usage.
$2?
Anywhere from.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, it was very minor.
It's very minor.
And all of our costs to date have been pass-through costs, correct?
Sorry?
All of our costs to date have been pass-through costs, the majority, where we don't tack anything on.
Correct.
Whatever we get from DWSD, we just, we charge the same rate.
Correct.
I make a motion that we take Cam and Sermet's recommendation to retain the current rate at $48.30 for the fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, big job. Training BSNA.
Okay, we're trying to get, we do have some dates lined up here for. A general ledger, accounts payable, cash receiving payroll, and we want to add the tax to it, so. Have they got the utility billing on it?
Yeah, they both do. The quote we have is for $2,550. It includes utility billing, which it shouldn't. It also includes travel up to $255. We'd like approval for this not to exceed the $2,800, and we're getting, we're not doing the utility billing. But we, but they didn't break it out by module, so we don't know which one. And what we did was, we kind of flubbed up on who was going to put this on the agenda, and it got missed. We'd set up the training. It's at the end of the month. Well, actually, one of them is this week.
So both your recommendations are training up to $2,800, Cam, minus utility.
Yes.
Is there a limit on the number of people?
I'm sorry?
Is there a limit on the number of people that can attend?
Um, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I'll get everybody from here, hopefully that needs it, that'll take care of everybody.
Well, like, the accounts payable will be myself, Karen, Calz, and Katie.
I don't want to see the people that it's pertinent to, so they get as much attention as they can on that.
Exactly, exactly. So it's like, there's, there's going to be like three people sitting in on each one.
I'll make a motion to approve the training, BSNA training at the cost of not to exceed $2,800.
Removing utility billing.
Removing utility billing.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number one, or number 21, closed session. I have a, and I have a, I have a question first, Attorney Joppik. Do we do public comment prior to closed session?
Do we do public comment prior to closed session? Even though the agenda's set, can we...
The way it's on your agenda, you would do it after the closed session, however...
You say, "Don't make anybody wait while we..."
What you could do is suspend the rules and with the consensus of the board to allow a public comment before the closed session, if the board...
Support.
Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Public comment. Any public comment at this time? I didn't want to make you wait while we're... You're welcome. Thank you for being patient. You state your name and address for record, please.
Gerald Strohs, 3456127 Mile Road, Lennox, Michigan. Every year, I do a spring cleanup on 27, just because I am tired of driving by trash. We're located between a couple trailer parks, subdivisions, schools. A lot happens on 27 Mile Road for a little country road, and we try to pay attention to what's going on. We've asked for help. This year, I, there was three guys, I think I heard the truck dump the stuff during the night, because you hear traffic coming. This time, I only heard traffic take off, and it was a loud exhaust, and it got my attention. And I laid there thinking, "God, I wonder what got dumped on our road tonight?" And in the morning, we got up, and there was three trash barrels. So we drove by it a couple days, and it smelled pretty bad. And we thought, "Well, the county will pick it up. That's their job. Don't rock the boat. Don't cause attention or..." But it got worse, and I wanted to know what was in those barrels. It was driving me nuts. So I tipped one over, and a bunch of blood ran out, and I thought, "Please let this be of an animal." You know, nowadays, you don't know. Then there was a green tarp in there, and I opened up the green tarp, and that was a mistake, but too late. It was the carcass. It was all the innards from leftover from hunting season. Normally, people that have acreage or hunters in the past that we've always known, you know, did that thing in the woods. So the fact that somebody drove down our road and dumped three barrels of material tells me that it was somebody that either lived in a trailer park, a subdivision, a development, because they didn't have the land to dispose of this stuff properly, you know, let the coyotes, you know, that's what happens. It just, they haven't dumped the way it was. So we called the county, and they said, "Well, if you go along with the ditch and put everything in piles, we'll come and pick it up." They said, "I can't promise you what day." And I said, "That's fine." So we continued down the road, and we'd been passing by the, a blue tarp in the bean field. Finally, we said, "Well, it's springtime. Let's get all this crap picked up." And I walked out into the bean field to get the blue tarp, and when I got close to it, it's just off the road, five feet off the road. When I got close to it, I realized it wasn't the tarp we'd been looking at all this time. It was a blanket. And I thought, "Well, all right, pick it up, along with all the truckload of trash, you know, pick it up." I pulled back a corner of this blanket, and there was a body in there with white hair, and it looked like a pig. And I was, after the whole deer carcass thing, I was kind of a little jittery. And when I saw the body under the thing, it kind of took me back for a minute, and I thought, "Oh, do I want to know? What do I do?" So I thought it was a pig, and I thought, "Well, not very many pig farmers in the area anymore, and why would a farmer dump out a pig? A large, you know, not full size, but why would somebody do that?" So I got the courage to open the other three corners, and it is a very large pit bull, a female pit bull dog that's shot through the side. The side facing up had a small entrance wound, but on the other side was a very large exit wound. I'm thinking, "Who? Who and why? And why in my neighborhood?" But if you look, there's so much area between houses. I'm not sure what we can do about it. But I'm getting tired. We have a landfill. We live with the landfill. Why? The drywall that was dumped on our road, I understand, I was told that they were at waste management and got upset because it would have costed them to dump the drywall. Well, then it ended up on both sides of 27 Mile Road, and we beg for ditches. We need ditches. We appreciate ditches. And then you're going to have people fill them with landfill material, or, I don't know. So I'm wondering what suggestions the township has. Who do you want us to call? Nobody really wants to address this issue. Last year, there was 27 tires taken off 27 Mile Road. I feel like I'm living in an alley in Detroit. This is my community. It was not like this before. And, look, I can't think of a reason why we have to live and put up with it. It took us three years, and I know there's a lot of township vehicles that go up and down. I'm not the only one that sees this. It was three years we looked at a red, or pink mattress, upside down, and we waited, and we waited, and we thought, "Well, God, look at all these garbage trucks. Somebody will." But they're not paid to stop and pick up. So I understood the point, and we waited, we waited, and I finally got hot enough just to call waste management. And they did send a truck. But I'm wondering, you know, a lot of this is on, I watch Channel 7, on in Detroit, with the dumping.
I'll be happy to meet with you, and we can sit down and make sure we get you the proper phone numbers for certain instances, and also by letting us know too, we can let our deputies make them aware of the situation. That's one of the things we can do in dealing with deer or any wild animals. There's the DNR that we can give a heads up to with situations like that. The dogs, animal control, to let them know with our sheriff that's going on.
I do.
I would hesitate, especially if you're dealing with certain materials of blood and stuff like that, of you messing with that even, not even knowing what it is. You could be, you know, that they might want to investigate that before touching it, especially it could be hazardous material to you, especially any blood products. So I definitely wouldn't touch that without them touching it first. But by bringing it to our attention, we can relay these messages, and also, it's hard sometimes, as you say, they're going to come at night or dump it off, and if any residents can be on the lookout, get license plate numbers or anything like that, that we can try and track them down and make them accountable for their actions. That's all we can do. Unfortunately, we have situations that take place in vacant areas where there's not people watching. It happens. But the best thing we can do is try to be aware of it and try and keep an eye out for it.
Can I...
Yes, please.
Sherry, did they not come out and pick up some of the carcass, but not all of the carcass? Is it not still laying there?
They took the containers. Well, there was the container with the blood and everything in it. That was on, you know, garbage with wheels on it. The other two containers were stuffed face to face, so you couldn't see what was in them. By this time, I'm like, "How much more?" So I wanted, so I cracked it open, and there was the rest of...
Did they take all of it?
The spine. The county came out. No, they did not take all of it. They did take the green tarp.
We have two gentlemen here that deal a lot with blood, and I don't know if they would warn against that.
I was, I'm sure they're not happy with me. I'm sure they're not happy with me, but...
No, I complain like that, I mean...
I didn't dump it. I want it stopped. I mean, I'm sure a truck driver was not happy.
Right. We can make, like I said, our sheriff aware if you're noticing increased traffic or vehicles stopping, things of that nature. We can make them more aware of that situation, and then contact the proper authorities regarding the other incidents, like I said, the DNR, animal control.
I did contact the sheriff over the dog to see. Obviously, they didn't leave any tags on the dog, but I thought, "Oh, a chip, those microchips or whatever." And an officer did come out and scan it, and they said, "No, there was no chip." And he would call animal control. "The dog's still there." That was like, um, three, four weeks ago. "The dog's still there." I tried the phone number in the phone book for animal control, and they just loop, you know, press one, press two. It just looped. I never got to a person.
Yeah, if you call for three or four weeks and you are not getting any action, please give us a call here, and we'll try to do a follow-up call with that department and see what the excuse is, what's going on.
The deal with the drywall, we did talk to an officer who, you know, small, you know each other a little bit.
Sure.
So we were thinking, "Cool, they actually know the man that dumped the drywall. Cool, there will be some type of resolution to this issue. Pretty soon, we'll see him come back and pick up his drywall." No, that's not what happened. The officer told me that the drywall blew off a truck.
And I can tell you with instances like that, we work hand-in-hand with waste management. They're quick to give us information, and they do have some film footage that they can see if somebody pulls up there with a load, and then they don't go in. And actually, we had an incident where it had happened on another road. A gentleman went out, Kathy's here too, they went out, their company went out and picked up the mess on private property, on an abandoned private property. So they are taking measures to ensure that that doesn't happen in our community, which is appreciated, because they didn't have to do that. But we're just trying to keep an eye on if anybody sees anybody doing stuff like that or sees a suspicious vehicle, write down the license plate number, and we can pass it on to our deputies. I don't know what our emergency services guys, if they have anything to add to that, but that's all I can think of at this time.
Can we, Mrs. Steve, can we increase the fine for illegal dumping? Is our own ordinance that would be more so than the normal? And the deadly animals incident can help maybe that, except if someone saw, it's going to cost me, you know, $500 if I get caught dumping. And with that said, the landfill, when they see somebody come in or they're turning a load away, if they say, "In Lennox Township, they have very steep fines, and you are in camera."
That would help.
You know, if that's said to them as they leave with their refrigerator, because we just talked about this, refrigerators and tires and drywall and, you know...
There's all kinds of here.
And we all lived on that back road. I've been looking at the same two tires for, you know, we had a whole living room set at one time. I figured some wife got mad at a husband and got rid of the chair, the TV, and, you know, coffee table, so.
And rest assured, it's not just for the city of town. I live on Omo. We get it all the time out there.
I was wondering, yeah. We can't be the only one.
No, on Omo where the curves are, because they can stop and dump real fast. There's stuff all the time that's dumped out there. I've seen refrigerators, appliances, furniture, everything.
But the thing is, if it's stuff that's coming from the landfill because they got turned away at the landfill...
That's closer.
If the landfill knows, I mean, if the landfill tells them when they get turned away, Lennox Township has large fines.
Well, I live on Low Flank Road, down in the wooded area.
That's a big dump.
Big signs that say, "Under penalty of law, you know, dumping or trashing." They pile it right up alongside the sign, just like that.
Exactly. The times we're living in.
And then nothing's done.
Yeah, the only thing I thought is, a couple years ago, I saw on the television, they were asking for communities if they needed security cameras, that you could actually apply for a grant to put security cameras on. May stop some of the daytime stuff. I'm not sure it would help anything in the dark or at night.
We have 36 square miles. We have 36 square miles and a lot of open areas, and that's the problem where you would position a camera to catch something. We do have major intersection cameras if somebody spots a vehicle that they might be able to track it at a certain point. But like I said, the best enforcement we're going to have is our residents keeping an eye out and reporting anything suspicious or license plate tags, things of that nature, vehicles, makes, models, colors. That's what I would recommend for right now.
But if you just write down a plate number, is the officer going to say you have to prove who was driving you?
It's all we can do.
I think we've been here before. It's just kind of a vicious circle.
Yeah. As far as, you know, when it comes down to it, it would be either our office or the McComb County Prosecutor's Office prosecuting these types of cases. And it is, enforcement is the most difficult part, and getting your evidence together. In the township, the ordinances that we have, we have a burden of proof that we have to meet when we go into court. You always hear that, and it's true. You do have to meet a certain burden of proof, meaning you have to have some evidence, and you have to have enough evidence to convince a jury or a judge. And in these cases, it could be either that you have the person that did it, and getting to what the supervisor and other board members are indicating, vigilance on the part of residents and the willingness to call in to the sheriff's department. When you see something like that, if you're able to see even a slight description of the driver or the vehicle, that helps. Any evidence is better than no evidence, and you never know where an investigation can go. You can get admissions from people, even if you don't have them driving the car necessarily. You never know when a detective or an investigator is looking into a matter. People are sometimes very willing to give information that might be against their interest, that, "Yeah, I was there." And then they find out why they're being asked that question, and suddenly, they find out, and so they've already admitted that, "Yeah, it was them there." So even if you don't have the person, don't think you shouldn't call in. Still call in with that license plate number, even if you can't see the license plate number, description of the vehicle, your make, model, color, and so forth, even the sound of the vehicle, and where it was and what it was doing. And if you're able to see that it was dumping and it takes off after dumping, let them know that as well. Again, any evidence is better than no evidence. There are difficult cases, but without any evidence whatsoever, there's absolutely nothing that the township can do.
Yeah, the chance of being on the road when it's happening is...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment at this time? No other public comment? Number 21, closed session, please. Need a motion?
If I may, Mr. Supervisor, the motion should include the purpose of the closed session being for a privileged and confidential legal opinion from the township attorney.
Thank you. So move in. Going into closed session. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Closed session at 9:23.
Go back to open session at 9:55.
Support. Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Back in open session, 9:55.
I make a motion to adjourn at 9:56.
Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.